Great, thanks. Since this is a work, excuse me, since this is a workshop, we'll get started right away. And as people join us, they can, they can jump in. So tonight, we're starting off with the police department, which is on page one hundred and forty-eight. So this budget overall is up three point five four percent, twenty-two thousand dollars. We did negotiate a new police labor contract that went into effect this past fiscal year. And does have an impact on the budget going forward. You will notice that under Personnel Services, the total Personnel Service line is only up two point six percent. Which is relatively good, it does include the contingency amount on line twenty-three oh one, so that was, that was utilized during the current fiscal year to help offset those increases in wages. Another, another component of that is also shown under the Employee Benefits as well, but this employee benefits overall are down one point three percent. So even though some of those lines in, in wages and benefits are up, up and down, they all pretty much weigh out to a little bit more than two percent on the wage side for increases. But it was a good, a good labor contract all the way around for the town and for the, and for the union. So in those, in those lines, you'll notice again, twenty-three oh one, the contingency is, was sixteen thousand, that's basically been absorbed into the other lines. And then the under Employee Benefits line twenty-six oh one, the contingency for the benefits for union negotiations, that was five thousand, and that's just been absorbed into the other lines as well. Other changes in this budget down under line thirty-nine twenty, Training and Education, you'll see there's an increase of a thousand dollars there from five thousand to six thousand. That's because we do have a new officer that will be going to the Main Criminal Justice Academy. The, those of you who haven't seen Officer Yat Su around, she is a fantastic addition to the department. She's originally from Albania, speaks five language, and she now is officially a US citizen. She came to us from the Rockland PD, and she is absolutely fantastic, been a great addition. Under Supplies line fifty-four sixteen, we've talked about this before in other budgets, that's the COVID expense line. Specifically for the Police Department, each of the officers has a dedicated PPE kit, Personal Protective Equipment Kit. So that they have supplies for themselves, so that they'll take that and put it in there in the cruiser when they're working, and then bring that back out of the cruiser when they're off shift. And those are all disposable supplies, obviously sanitizer, gloves, masks, et cetera. On the second page, under the Capital Items. Line seventy-two fifty, a cruiser purchase, so this cruiser purchase was delayed basically for the last two years. The intent last, in this current year was to replace a cruiser, and then during the pandemic cuts, this is one of the areas that we reduced here. So we do our budgeting for the full price minus the value of our cruiser that we'll be re-replacing. So you see a thirty-three thousand dollar number there. There's also a decrease in line seventy-five thirty-five from fifteen thousand or four thousand, that's the deposit into the police vehicle reserve, and again, that's just based on the replacement schedule that you'll see in your, in your budget book as well. And down under the Revenue Line, while we're talking about the cruiser replacement, you see the use of Vehicle Reserve under R zero six zero nine, so we're using ten thousand dollars from the Vehicle Reserve to help offset the cost of that cruiser replacement, so there's a twenty-three thousand dollar net there, if you will. Those are really the highlights for the Police Department for increases and decreases, other than getting into individual wage and benefit lines, certainly any questions or comments?
Mark, you know I come late to the party, I've got questions. As we go through, I know in January, I think you had money that you made adjustments to people's wages already. Is that correct? A- as we go through, would you indicate who got an adjustment already? As where, I mean, I know that most of them are contractual, but those that aren't, that you made adjustments to, would you let us know?
I will, and I should have said in the, in the Administrative Assistant line here, there was an adjustment made. Which is why there's an increase of fourteen point four percent. I did, I did note some of those already in the Town Clerk's Budget, as well as Finance. So those really are the, are the ones that we've made a wage adjustments to, but this is one here, the Administrative Assistant line twenty-one twenty.
So that's not based on an increase in hours, it's just an adjustment so they're, they fall in line with other towns?
Yes. Bob, you had your hand.
I do, Randy, it's a question for Randy. So by and large, do we run two cruisers on patrol on an average day?
Depends on the day, Bob, sometimes we have overlapping coverage with the sergeant coming in early. We have officers on Tuesday that have overlapping coverage, we're not running two cruisers all day, every day, no.
Okay, I mean, there's some times when in the middle of the summer, you might have three cruisers running.
Well, the typical this week, Jim Moore's at the academy for the next two weeks, so he's got the spare cruiser. And then when we have officers in with overlapping coverage, say tomorrow. Actually, today, I've got two out there right now, so you know, those are the times we use that other, that other cruiser.
Okay, and a lazy question, probably it's, it's somewhere in the back of the floor. How many, how many miles do these guys consume over a course of a year on patrol?
This year is gonna be way down because of COVID, we restricted our officers' movement and whatnot, so we're probably in the twenties. I was tied up in Camden and didn't get over to get the mileage off the cruisers today, so I could get those.
If I could, I mean, I, and I know things have changed, Bob, but we were doing on aver-
I'm not trying to make that statement.
We, we were doing on average ninety-three thousand a year, okay, three vehicles combined.
All right. Yeah. And honestly, Randy, I wasn't looking for a flippant answer, I figured you had that in the top of your head somewhere. Thanks, Mark.
Roger. If it had been any other weeks, Bob, I probably would have.
Other questions on the Police Department's budget at this point? Okay. Next up is Animal Control, page one seventy-eight. So this, this budget, obviously a very small one, is up fourteen hundred dollars overall. And essentially, that's all in line thirty, fifty, medical exams, we will have a new Animal Control Officer. And so we have to offer the rabies vaccine for this, for the new ACO. So there's that expense for that, and then there's a four hundred dollar increase in the PAWS Animal Rescue Contract. I do want to note that the, the PAWS Contract is now a fixed price contract for three years going forward, so that's a good thing.
Who was our old ACO and who is the new?
We, you want me to answer that, Bill, I can? We're using a combined ACO with Camden, but I thought, you know, we ought to give the Rockport officers an opportunity, so Tony Del Vecchio from the Rockport Police Department was interested, so he's going through the training right now, so he can be Rockport's ACO. That gives us basically two ACOS, one in Camden, one in Rockport, they can share responsibilities and handle calls if one is not working, and the other one is, how we're doing ACO work is the officers still pick up the friendly dogs, but if you've got one that's a biter, the ACO will come out and handle that, they handle all the dog bites and whatnot. So I think getting one in each town would be beneficial.
Bill, I have a question of you perhaps that you might be able to answer. As they're an employee of the town, whether they're Camden's or ours, and they're a full forty hour a week person. If they're doing this and it's stipended, I mean, is there any overtime issues that might come into play? If they're working beyond their forty hours as an Animal Control Officer?
We're not paying them a stipend. What we're paying them is that thousand dollars is if they're off duty and get called out, they get a minimum three and a half, a three hour call out.
Well, that, and that's where I'm going, if that's three and a half hours beyond their forty, as an employee, does that make it overtime? That's what I'm asking.
Yes. Yeah, it would be overtime.
So it's not three and a half hours of overtime, it's like two hour straight, you know, at time and a half, or something like that?
It all, it all depends on when the call comes in and, you know, whether they're on duty or not, so.
Well, I know that, but you still have a forty hour weekend if you're off duty.
Yes.
In that forty hour week, you're still gonna get overtime, so is it three and a half hours of overtime?
It's three hours of overtime if they get called out.
It's a good gig, I guess.
Well, I can tell you, I don't think we called them out at all last year, so.
And that's why I was wondering, because it, it was nothing going on with it, I was wondering why we need to, but I get it.
Well, well, you know, Mark, I want to give the officers in Rockport that opportunity to have that if they would like it, and it doesn't hurt because, you know, people change, people leave, and if we have one of them leave, then we've got somebody else that can take over for both, so double coverage, I guess, is always a little better than single.
I think Jeff Parker had his hand up.
I, I did, very minor question about the rabies vaccine, I, I presume that that's something that gets utilized only when there's a suspect of being bitten by a rabid animal, or is that, is that, is that contraceptive?
That's offering the Animal Control Officer the rabies vaccine, because they are most likely the one that'll come in contact with an animal that may have rabies.
So rather than reactive, that's proactive?
Correct.
Thank you.
I heard you say offering it to them, they're not required to?
They're not mandated to have it, the same as hepatitis or any of that, those type of vaccinations, we don't mandate them, we offer that to them. So if the officer doesn't want them, then we won't make them have it. But we've got to have the money in there to pay for it if they do want it.
Other questions around Animal Control? Okay, moving on. Chief, Fire Department's next. That's, sorry, that's page one sixty, for those of you that don't know the page number. So this budget, the Fire Department budget is the net budget is up just over three percent, almost thirteen thousand dollars. And this pretty much is all around our potential EMS First Responder Program. So if you look under Personnel Services, don't have a line number, but EMS First Responders, so I talked about this a little bit in my introduction a couple of weeks ago, where we've been through a EMS Evaluation Project with the town of Camden, the towns of Camden, Hope and Lincolnville, as well as Penn Bay Medical Center. And we'll be continuing, as I said before, we'll be continuing the contract with Northeast for a year at least. In the meantime, we're developing a regional EMS First Responders Program with all four towns, so that we have boots on the ground, if you will, before the ambulance comes, so we can have some comfort and some direct minimal care to any EMS issue that we might have. But that person can also relay that information to the ambulance as they're, as they're en route to the call. These numbers, you know, I've put six thousand dollars in there, Chief Peaslee had recommended a couple of thousand dollars for on-call pay. So we are paying on-call pay for First Responders. Basically, at a two hour minimum for when they respond to a call at twenty dollars an hour. This is all being developed, so these are our best estimates at this point. The way that we're working through this, and we'll be working through this hopefully through the next six months or so, and this would launch hopefully January first, if we can get everything lined up and get our ducks in a row. Is that there would be a, a pool of First Responders, if you will, excuse me, amongst the four towns, Lincolnville, Hope, Camden and Rockport. And those, at, at this point, those First Responders would be able to respond to any of those communities. So if you had, you know, somebody that is technically a Hope First Responder, but they're working in Lincolnville, then they could respond in Lincolnville, and everybody would be covered under the insurance for the, for the program. So there's six thousand that's budgeted for that, that's based on the number of ambulance calls that we have, a percentage of those. Again, it's hard to judge what that, what that's gonna end up looking like, and how many calls we will have the First Responders respond to. But we're assuming two First Responders responding to, to a call. Later on in the budget, you'll see equipment for them as well, but we'll go to Training and Education line, which is line thirty-nine twenty. You see a decrease here, again, not a lot of money here. But there is a decrease there because we're doing less frequent, excuse me, less frequent regional trainings because of the pandemic, so we're, we're getting together in smaller groups. Helen, did you have a question?
Yeah, yeah, these EMS First Responders, are these police officers, firefighters that are being additionally trained? And how are they managing to get there any faster than the ambulance?
We are assuming that most of them are going to be firefighters, but they don't have to be necessarily firefighters that we currently have, they could be other citizens that are interested in, in just EMS, for example.
So ski patrol, somebody who was on ski patrols, already got the basic training, might sign up for this program?
Yeah, could happen. Mark?
Yeah, I just had to go back and look, how many of the police officers that we have that in all likelihood are going to be there before any ambulance? How many police officers do we currently have that are trained for EMS responding?
Jason, you want to answer that question, or Randy, if he's still here?
They all are trained in CPR, AED, Narcan, as are all my firefighters. I think there was at least two or one Rockport Officer that completed the EMS course, whether he chooses to end test or not, to be licensed. I know there's other people in the community here that have expressed interest in joining a First Responding Group, Linda Clancy being one of them, and there's some others out there. Keep in mind, Northeast still does a large amount of transfers, and they're not all as readily, readily available. And we do still continue to call Rockland for calls, not only here, but to Camden, Lincolnville and Hope, which puts a significant delay in the response, and that's the main reason for this.
Yeah, no, and I, and I'm all cool with that, I think you got-
No, I was kind of answering Helen as well, I was kind of going to both of you at the same time with that.
You know, I think we're headed in a good direction, but I, I would also encourage the Police Chief to get more of our guys active like the Fire Department is, because, you know, in all likelihood, we're there a little bit before, but you know, the more people you have that are trained like Jason's proposing, the better.
I, I mean, I know every officer that's ever responded to a call that I've gone to does CPR, they do all of that.
Yeah.
Whether you can mandate, especially with them being a union, to make them become a EMT where they're licensed, I don't know if you could do that, and I don't know if they'd be willing to do that.
They were all offered the opportunity to take the EMT course, two of them took it.
It was just a thought, I didn't see any money in there for them, that's why I asked.
When I think as we, as we get this program off the ground, you know, I think it will, once we get everything ironed out and we get it up and running, I think there may be more interest in it when it comes to that.
The big thing is, I wanted to get our foot in the door and start something. It's needed, Camden First Aid, when they're around, that was one of the biggest things that they offered was First Responders, and it was a huge asset for all the towns. And that's, I just want to get us in the door with some type of ability to get us to go there and be covered live legally. We may not be able to perform what, you know, an advanced or paramedic, but we can get there and give a full size up, you know, with control bleeding, we can slow an ambulance down, we could speed them up, there's a lot of things that we can do in a short five minutes before an ambulance can get there.
Bill, I think it's important to note that our, that our officers carry AEDs with them on every shift. We have deployed them in the field, we have also deployed Narcan, we do get there a lot faster than the First Aid usually is there. So everybody has that First Responder type training, and we recertify on that every year, so everybody is up to speed on that.
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna mention that.
The EMT course, as you know, is, and Jason, you can tell how many hours it was, and how many weeks of training it is, so it is a very big commitment. Like I said, we offered everybody the opportunity who wanted to do it. They were too out of the, the department that were interested in doing it, so we, we provided them with that training.
It was a hundred and seventy hour EMS course that, unlike the past, it was all done via Zoom. And for anybody that does these Zoom classes, it's not something you ever want to do again, it was very difficult for us to do it, but we managed through it, so everybody passed their practical test through the state up in Auburn, so we've gotten to that point.
Under Contractual Services, other contractual services, you'll see line forty-one oh six and forty-one twenty-seven, hose testing and pump testing have some increases there, small increases, and that's based on the actual costs for those services. Getting along with this, with the First Responder theme on, under Supplies, you'll see the First Responder Equipment. Again, this is for equipping any of the First Responders that that we do end up having with this, with this program. It's an estimate that was created by the four Fire Chiefs, obviously with Chief Peaslee as well, figuring out what we need for equipment for each individual one. And we'll have a much better idea, obviously, as we get closer to working through the, the design of the, of the program. Under Capital Items, line seventy-five thirty-eight, the Radio Reserve. You'll notice that there's a five thousand dollar deposit for the Radio Reserve account, there is nothing budgeted in this year. This is one of the pandemic cuts that took place after the budget was originally approved last year. So we, we should be putting five thousand dollars a year into the Radio Reserve, but it was removed during this last year, so I've put it back in. That's essentially it for the Fire Department, additional questions? Sure, why I can't talk tonight? I had that problem earlier today in a meeting too, so.
Long day yesterday.
It was a long day yesterday, yes. No other questions on the Fire Department? Okay. Next up is Emergency Management, page one ninety-four. You'll see an overall decrease of a whopping forty dollars in this account, which amounts to over a percent, which is huge, you know. This is one of those big accounts, basically the difference here is that we remove the compensation, workers' comp insurance out of this because those full-time employees that serve as the EMA Director and the Assistant EMA Director, their unemployment and workers' comp is already covered in their base rate, so it's covered in their other departments, so we don't need to double count that here. Questions? Okay, moving on. Public Safety Building is on page one ninety. So this is the Police and Fire Department, obviously on Main Street. Underline thirty-six oh six, Building Repair and Maintenance, you've seen an increase there from twenty-five hundred to fifty-two fifty. This is to replace one of the main entry doors on the police station, needs a full replacement. And also to upgrade the lighting in the police side of the building to LED lights. And also includes replacing, upgrading the bathroom fan and lights, so general maintenance really, that needs to be done and try to keep up on that. Under Other Contractual Services, doesn't have a line number yet, ply-mo vent service. In my introduction, we talked about the fact that we've finally had the Vehicle Exhaust Removal System installed in the Fire Station Bays. So we do have to have a service to that pretty much on an annual basis, so that's a new item at three hundred and fifty dollars. And then there's another increase, excuse me, under Heating Fuel Line thirty-two oh five, and that's based on usage, plus we will be at the end of a contract, and we actually had a you'll see this in all the departments that have buildings, we had a, a very good price when we went out to bid the last year around this time, so we do expect an increase when we go out to bid again. Mark, did you have a?
No, I was just gonna ask if there's any chance that the timing of the bids could be shifted such as we would have a more firm figure during March, you know, if you went out in January or whatever, just a thought.
I hate, I hate to do it in January.
Mark, you can't go out in January in the fuel business, this is the best time to get a fixed price. Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll go back on my fifteen years experience in oil business, this is the time when you get fixed numbers.
And that's, this is about the time last, last year, we went out, and I don't remember what the price was per gallon, but we got an amazingly good price. Maybe it'll happen again. Other questions on the Public Safety Building? We do have a new member of the Budget Committee, it appears. Wearing a collar.
Yeah, she decided to go.
Close my door so my two couldn't jump on my lap. The West Rockport Fire Station is line, is page one seventy. So really, there's two major differences here, and I, and I do want to say that we had an error in one of the cells calculating, so under the Fiscal Year Twenty-Twenty-One Budget Column, the total the total and the net were not adding up correctly, so on your printout, it says the total for the current year was five thousand six twenty-nine, it didn't include, it didn't add up, add in the ninety-one hundred dollars for building and design and engineering. So on the screen, Megan has create, has corrected that, so you see that the total for the year is actually fourteen seven twenty-nine. Line fifty-two twenty, the LP Gas Line, so this is the line for the generator. So we don't have to fill that tank generally every year, but when we do need to fill it, we need to budget for it, so that's why there's a difference there. And the biggest thing, obviously, is underneath the Building Design Engineering Line, so this is for the Continued Engineering Design Work Survey Work for the West Rockport Fire Station Replacement. The next task for us in this is, is what we're calling Task Three in the plan, and that's to basically get the plans to a point that they're ready to go to the Planning Board, and then we'll, we'll have good information for pricing as well. The forty thousand dollar number in there, fortunately, that was a, it was a placeholder, I had said that a couple of weeks ago when we did the introduction. We can reduce that number to twenty-four thousand dollars. Uh, we can reduce that number to twenty four thousand dollars. And that'll get us to the point we need to, um, to potentially get to a bond, uh, question.
Bill, is, what is your timing on, on the bond? Do we know that yet?
Yeah, so the. Including this funding in there will get us through essentially the summer months. And allow us hopefully to have some informational meetings and that type of thing, whether they're through Zoom or, or if they're in person, if they can be. Um, and really show the design and answer questions from the public. In order to, the thought is to get us to a November. Vote for a bond, potentially. And those of you that, um, that don't know, it's, uh, two A architects from, from West Rockport, essentially. Um, they're the architects for the project. Uh, they are giving us a discount on their architectural fees because they're residents of, of West Rockport. And Gartley and Dorsey are the engineers for the site plan. For that project. Questions around the West Rockport Fire Station budget? Okay. Moving on to other public safety services, page one seventy four. So line thirty four twenty, fire protection hydrants, um, we had put in a placeholder of a three percent increase for. The hydrant, uh, line, um, since we've printed the budget. We've got the information that's gonna be a two percent increase, so that number can be changed. To basically one hundred and seventy two thousand. Line forty three oh five is the Northeast Mobile Health Contract. I've got a placeholder of a three percent increase in there for that, I think that that'll be, uh, I think the number will be less. So when we get into our, um, our workshops separately with the select board and with the budget committee. Um, I'm pretty sure that that number will be less, will probably be closer to a percent. So there'll be a little bit of a decrease there in that line as well, but I don't have an exact number yet. Um, I should have that actually this Thursday. That's essentially it for. Differences in the, uh, other public safety services, unless there's a, there's a question, I'll certainly answer. Any questions you might have on this?
Got a quick question about the streetlights, weren't we doing something that would cut that price down? Have we done it and this is the low price?
Well, yes and no. We've, we've completed the project for replacing the lights with LED light. Uh, but we have the debt service payment to the off product, so. Eventually we'll, we'll get there and this, this number will go away.
And Bill, will that number just keep going up each year?
No, that, we, we had an estimate.
Okay.
That, for forty seven thousand dollars in this year, um, and so the actual payment is forty seven seven thirty.
Okay.
So we were off by a little bit.
And then that'll be the consistent number for the seven years of police.
Right.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. Not on your schedule is the planning and development budget, which is on page one hundred and twelve. So line twenty one twenty. Um, you'll see what looks like a hundred and twenty eight percent increase. This is the position that we tried to have, um. Four departments cover. I had to think for a minute and it didn't work out as well as we hoped, um, so we've. Uh, changed that so that she's, uh, this position's now covering three different departments, uh, planning code. Uh, and the police department, so, uh, in addition, so there's more hours built into this, uh, because she's shifted. And this is the position that was shared with police earlier that Mark had mentioned, um. Where there was a wage adjustment as well, so we have more hours in here and we have a wage adjustment as well. And some of those, um. That, that reflects down under the employee benefits as well, you'll see some adjustments there that are a little bit higher than they normally would have been. If we were just doing a normal cost of living increase.
Yeah, question, uh, Bill?
Yes, Helen.
Line twenty one ten and line thirty sixty. What's the difference? Well, I, I don't quite understand what, uh, twenty one ten is, is. Zeroed out and then thirty sixty is sixty eight thousand, is that just a switch in how we're calling it?
Well, what, what the difference is here is that, um, we don't have an employee that's a, that's a planner, we, we. Contract for that, so it's under. It's under contractual services, miscellaneous professional services, that line thirty sixty is where we have the planner. Budgeted.
That's Bill Nape Power?
It has been Bill Nape Power, yes.
Yeah, I know, I don't know if it was last year, the year before, when we. Eliminated a full-time planner, it was sort of as a, let's see how this works out. And maybe bring the person back full-time, how, how is it working out and? I, I've heard rumors bubbling comments. From the public that maybe it isn't really working out without a full-time planner.
Yeah, so I think, looking at the budget back in, um, uh, fiscal year eighteen, it looks like, or nineteen, it was eliminated, just looking in the book. And so. While we're talking about that, that line thirty sixty, you'll see an increase of basically eighty two hundred dollars there. Well, our current contract with McEd has two days a week for planner. I'm proposing in the budget to go to three days a week for a planner. Uh, but, but under our current contract with McEd, we get one day a week of an economic development specialist. And, um, and two days a week of plan.
So we're paying more under contractual than they were for, were for a full-time planner?
Well, you, you're only seeing a salary under the full-time planner, so the benefits would have been under the benefit lines. So, so it's hard to look at just the salary and compare it to the. To the contract, um, and there are other things that are in contract as well, such as, uh, Secretary of Services for the Planning Board and ZBA. Are also in that miscellaneous professional services line.
Okay, thank you.
But I will, but I will say that. Obviously, I'm proposing to go to three days a week for a planner because we need it, we do need at least three days a week, um. We were able to negotiate, I was able to negotiate with Mc, McEd to get, uh, an economic development specialist one day a week. Which I think is very important, but, and we're not paying any extra for that. Um, so we're paying for that within our current contract, which is a good thing. But I think at some point. We'll eventually have to go back to a full-time planning and economic development director.
Does Camden have a full-time?
Yes. And I've asked to, if, if there was any possibility of sharing that person. And the answer was, he's got more on his plate than he can handle in Camden alone, so. Bob, you had a question?
Yeah, just, well, more, more an observation, I'm not gonna be one to justify a lot of increases, but when I, when you look at. Fiscal year seventeen, eighteen, eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty. In the span of that four, really, realistically, yeah, four years, the increase, if you, if you go look at twenty two and you look at eighteen. You're looking at a seven and a half percent increase over the span of that four years. It looks like there were a lot of things that were tried in this department over that four years that didn't work. And as a result, you're really only looking at a two percent increase every year, so. Again, I'm not trying to justify the increase, but I think it's, of all the increases, this is one I could probably tuck stomach, so.
Yeah, uh, that's a good point, I mean, when you do look back. It's not, there's not much of an increase overall in that department over those years, so. And we are, we're trying different things, we're seeing what will work, um. And, you know, at the same time too, trying to find full-time, uh, planning and economic development directors. There's a, uh, lack of those statewide, um, I know of. I know of six or seven positions right now that are being advertised for that, for that full-time position, um, and there are people. Towns are having trouble finding them, I know Rockland, um, had searched for. I wanna say a year, year and a half for a planner, uh, and couldn't find one, now they have a full-time economic development director, which is different. Uh, but they were looking for a planner and they couldn't find one. Um, going back to the, to the budget, underline thirty forty legal fees, uh, you see an increase from two thousand to four thousand. Um, we've been having a number of appeals for various things, and this is to cover. Basically covers hopefully one appeal, um, per year. Underline thirty eight fifty printing, seen increase from a thousand to four thousand dollars. This basically is for the comp plan, uh, process, we do have some money in reserve for that, that we're, we're using. Uh, but this gives us, uh, some allowance for printing, we'll be doing printing. Not on our machines, but, um, but you know, at Staples or at a coffee shop, uh, for various things that have to do with that. And that's essentially it under expenses, under revenues on the second page, um. You'll notice under. Permit fines, line zero two zero three. We budgeted fifteen hundred dollars, um. We're being more, more diligent, if you would say, around that, to make sure that we're making sure people are complying with our, uh, zoning ordinance. Planning board fees and plumbing and wastewater inspection fees, you'll see that I've budgeted. Uh, a little bit more in both of those categories, and it's basically based on the actuals over the past. Uh, few years, we are seeing even with a pandemic, consistent construction and activity. Uh, so we should budget for additional fees there. Other questions?
Yeah, Bill, on the perm fees, it looked like there was a spike in nineteen and twenty, what drove that?
There, there were two, uh, big building projects during those years. That had, had large permit fees, one of them being, uh, for instance, the physician's building at, at Penn Bay Medical Center. So you had one permit that had a big fee.
With the current. I, I don't know where we are with the hotel and things like that, but is, is that worked into the projection here, or would that give us upside?
That permit, if it's issued, would be issued in this fiscal year. So it wouldn't affect next year's revenue.
But it would give us upside for this year?
Yes. Other questions around? Planning and development? Okay, so this might be a record, I, I've only been here for the two budget reviews. But we've completed the presentation of the different budgets. Um, and so we do have meetings coming up, obviously, this, uh, the select board, I have to pull my schedule. The next step is that the select board meets tomorrow night, um, in a budget workshop. To really dig into the, uh, different budgets, um, and provide some consensus votes on those budgets. Uh, after that. There is, uh, basically a week off and then the budget committee will meet on March sixteenth. Uh, which is two weeks from tonight. And then the select board will review the recommendations from the budget committee on March twenty second. Uh, in a workshop before their regular board meeting. And then they'll have their final vote on their budget on that night at their select board meeting. So what I would say, um, is that as you're continuing to review the budget and have questions about it. You know, feel free to send me questions and Megan questions, um, we certainly will answer those, do the best we can answering those. And we'll go from there, anybody have any comments or questions?
I presume, as usual, the budget committee will be invited to tomorrow's meeting to listen in?
Yes.
Five thirty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Eric?
Yeah, I do have a question overall, you know, last year when we discussed the budget, we also talked about. How much the assessed value of the town itself had increased, so when you're. When we're looking at the review of this budget and you're saying, oh, there's a six or seven percent increase. In the overall budget, I mean, there's been considerable amount of construction going on over the last year or so. How much of that would be absorbed by the new property taxes that? We weren't already looking at in the current year? Do we have any idea with that yet, or is it still kind of up in the air because we haven't hit April?
It, it still is up in the air, we certainly don't have any final numbers yet, and, um, you won't have those until, you know, July.
Yeah.
That being said. It has been a good year and in talking with the assessor, he thinks that. You know, we potentially could be around a six million dollar increase in value, uh, which certainly helps offset. Any increase in the budget.
Okay, yeah, that helps because when we're looking at where's, where to cut, if you're looking at a six percent increase and then you. Carry that out at the mill rate, I mean, a lot of it will be absorbed by, or a good chunk of it could be absorbed by that increase.
Correct.
Yeah, so it may not be as bad as it looks.
Don't forget the, the big elephant in the room is not the town budget, it's not the county budget. It's, it's the school budget, of course, and I'd be really cautious that. Our assessment increase is going to pay for everything, I would really. I would really ask the select board to prioritize properly and not think that. A six or seven percent increase is acceptable even in these days. I mean, I, we ran the, the county budget at a very, very tight increase this coming year. Um, it would seem to me that any municipal, uh, government ought to be thinking about keeping it close this year.
Yeah, uh, I don't want anybody to forget that we had a significant valuation decrease. Couple of years ago. That significantly impacted our financials. For the tune of, I think it was close to ninety to a hundred million dollars total. And, uh. You know, we're still recovering from that in many ways.
Yeah, we certainly are, and you know, I, I don't, I don't have the, as you know, I don't have the school numbers, um, yet from them, we threw in estimates. Based on a four percent increase, um, I'm hoping that I can get, you know, at least some numbers from them, I know. The superintendent has asked to attend a select board meeting, um, probably the first one in April. Um, where she'll, uh, review her budget with the select board. And answer questions from them, um. And I, I expect that'll be an interesting meeting.
Could I make a comment?
Sure, Helen, and then, then Jeff.
Yeah, uh, first of all, I am not going to run for the budget committee again, it's been nine years and much as I. Enjoy doing this, it's a little too much, uh, however, I am going to be running for the library committee again, and I will be at the library. From ten to eleven on Saturday, if anybody would like to stop by and sign my nominating papers, thank you.
Yeah, uh, just, I'm remembering the numbers, the, the drop in the valuation of the town resulted in a middle rate increase of about nine percent. Uh, what, two years ago?
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was the year before I came on board, so yeah, two thousand eighteen, I think. Mark?
Uh, just to Eric's point a, a bit ago, um, it, it's six point three or four percent, but that. Is also taken into consideration using three hundred thousand. Out of undesigned fund balance, so it's a pretty hefty increase. Um, taking that into consideration.
Yeah, no, and it certainly is, and as I said in the introduction, you know, we, you have to remember too, that we had some significant cuts in the budget that was approved. Originally approved last year, uh, because of the pandemic, and I put the budget together. To say, here's what, what we really should be budgeting and all those reserve accounts with the reserve deposits, we're not mortgaging our future down the road. A two hundred thousand dollar increase alone in road construction and paving is a big number, it's a big jump. Um, but that's one of the, the lines we cut last year, you know, a hundred thousand dollars was cut out of that from three hundred to two hundred thousand.
But you know, that's, that's because we were bonding out quite a bit, I think that's one of the reasons.
Well, it was easier, it was easier to do that because we were one, yeah, yeah, but at the same time, you know, we. The town has taken out two. Yeah, yeah, but at the same time, you know, we, the town has taken out two infrastructure bonds in the last. What, four years? Because of, because the budget, the paving and reconstruction hasn't really been budgeted at the proper level, so.
And, and now that's, and I agree. And, and I guess where I'm going and will go, starting tomorrow night, is that. You know, at some point in time, we're going to be. Asking the residents to. To bond a fire station. And. You know, we've got to be very conscientious. Of what we do this year and potentially next, so that we can sell it down the road, so.
No, and I agree, and you know that, you know, I'm not one that wants to. I don't want to raise the tax rate. That's not something that I'm looking forward to doing. I take pride in, in the fact that. My first year, we lowered the tax rate for a variety of reasons, but. I do take pride in that, so. Other comments or questions tonight? Okay, so be, be on the lookout for that link for the select boards workshop tomorrow. Or you can watch it, you can watch it on live stream regardless, so I would encourage everyone to do that. And we'll, we'll dig deep and elbow deep into the budget. And again, if you've got questions in the meantime, feel free, please send them. To Megan and or me, and we can, we can answer those in the meantime as well. Okay, everyone.
Bye. Thanks, everyone.